Good evening. You are watching the Board of Education regular meeting for the Oshkosh area school district. Based on ongoing health issues involving COVID-19, the school board meetings will be held in the public, for the public, in a virtual environment in the interest of everyone's health and safety at this time. It is our sincere hope to return to meetings in person with the public present as soon as possible. The board will be using Zoom as its virtual meeting and will be live streaming the public meeting on Oshkosh Media YouTube channel. Are we in compliance with open meeting law?
Yes.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Wyman?
Here.
Carlin?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Carnes?
Here.
Feshal?
Here.
Salaji?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, would you lead us in a flag of allegiance first?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united states, and with liberty, justice, and
Thank you for that. We are at, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Herzog, seconded by Carlin. Any discussion in regards to moving things around in the agenda?
No.
All right. I have one. I would like to move, I'd like to pull Resolution Number 10 and to place it into individually considered resolutions.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. I don't think we need a second or a motion for that. I think we just need to, just when we approve all of that, it just automatically gets put in.
Okay.
So, thank you for that, though.
Mm-hmm.
Any other changes? All right. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Carlin?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Feshal?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Thank you. All right. Next up is Board administrative reports. I lead with a Board President's report. In the last couple of weeks, I've had an opportunity to be at schools, specifically North and Jacob Shapiro. At North, I attended the Veterans Ceremony that took place. It was, it's a somber ceremony every single year that always provides great stories and great insights into the lives of veterans and the roles that being a member of our armed forces can do to uplift and change lives. So, it was great. I think I counted about 40 veterans that acknowledged, that were walking, that were stood up when asked and going through all the armed forces. And so, it was, it was a well put together event. So, thank you, Oshkosh North, for doing that. I also met with the administration and members of Oshkosh West and Oshkosh North staff who take steps to support students of the LGBTQ community and to run through ideas of ways that the board and the administration could become more familiar with the issues of that, of that student community. So, there may be more to come in regards to our role within all of that, but we'll talk about that when it comes. So, and lastly, I had the opportunity to have one of my family members take part in the vaccination clinic that took place at Jacob Shapiro. I want to take a moment to acknowledge the event inside and outside of the event. But I, it was well, it was very put together, very well. And you kind of worked through the clinic and through the building. The part that I loved the most about it wasn't necessarily that my family member was getting the vaccine, but was the opportunity to take a small little tour through the unique school that Jacob Shapiro is in regards to its open concept of classrooms all being kind of in one space and everything, and being able to show my family member that and to catch up with staff and other families that were there for that as well. So, that is my report. So, Mr. Davis, could you lead us in your good news report?
Yes. So, for the superintendent's good news report, let's start with South Park Middle School, recently participated in the Socktoberfest, or Socktober Drive with the Oshkosh Rotary. The school community collected over 300 pair of socks that will be donated to the Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Center and the day-to-day warming shelters. So, congratulations on that good work. We previously talked about the Sweat for Event, event that our communities program at Oshkosh North put on. Pleased to report that the event, which took place on Veterans, which took place on Veterans Day, raised over $8,000 and got, raised over $8,000 for Got Your Six Canines. The organization provided service dogs free of charge for veterans who struggle with PTS. And so, and actually, the Sweat for Event event was the week, the week before Veterans Day, and Veterans Day, there was another recognition event, more money raised. So, congratulations to everybody involved in that. We had about 150 people participate in the fitness event, the Sweat for Event event. Congratulations to our Lego League team, who participated in the Lake Shore Technical College FLL Regional. The team gave an impressive presentation on their innovative project, robot design and programming, and displayed their core values in a combined 30-minute judge session before a panel of judges. The team earned high scores in all three judged components and was awarded the Robot Performance Award and the Tournament Champions Award. So, congratulations to everybody participating in that. Two of our awesome teachers at Merrill Middle School have started a Chinese club, so here's an example of that. They're using their past experiences of living abroad and their language abilities to teach speaking and writing while also teaching about the cultural traditions and celebrations. Merrill students recently participated, or recently completed a pen pal letter writing exchange with a school in Taiwan. So, keep up the good work on that project. There have been a lot of school successes happening at Oshkosh West. Congratulations to Senior Elijah Jeffers on qualifying for the WIAA State Cross Country Meet, and special congratulations to the Oshkosh West Girls Cross Country Team on finishing as a sectional runner-up and qualifying as a team for the WIAA State Cross Country Meet. Two of West's equestrian team members, Ava Wessenberg and Sequoia Eckstein, also became individual state champions. And as a team, Oshkosh West placed seventh in the state and earned the Spirit Award. So, congratulations on that. The Oshkosh West Girls Swim and Dive Team sent three relays to state and two individual qualifiers. At state, the girls broke two school records in the 200 and 400 free relays. The team placed 17th out of 39 teams at state after taking second in the conference and at the sectionals. So, congratulations, ladies, on a great season in swimming. Then congratulation goes out to Delaney Cook, who was selected to be part of the Wisconsin School Music Association State Honors Music Project. Delaney was selected to be part of the Honors Mixed Choir, which performed at the Overture Center in Madison. Yes, so, back to the vaccine. So, we hosted two clinics, one at Oak Lawn, and then yesterday at Shapiro, as was mentioned earlier, for children ages five through 11. We had nearly 300 children vaccinated as a result of this effort. District also welcomed representatives from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services to tour the clinic as a shining example in the state, and that took place over at Shapiro's STEM Academy. It provided an opportunity to highlight the exceptional partnership between the Winnebago County Health Department and the school district. We also had support from the Army National Guard and some of the organization. So, we appreciate, appreciate all their work. And a special shout-out goes to Ashton, who's pictured in the picture with me, who was excited and brave in getting his vaccine yesterday. So, because of the fact that you had to roll up your sleeves, I needed to go T-shirt for that, so just so everybody, that's not what I wore to the press conference, just want to be really clear on that. That was vaccination only.
Probably you were getting your boosters.
Yeah, see, I did get my booster, actually. I did get my booster as part of that process. So, and this is just a list of the events that have gone on in the last couple of weeks. So, it continues to be a busy time in the Oshkosh area school district. So, that concludes the good news report for tonight.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have the District Administrator Supplemental Reports. And as usual, we have a report from Mr. Kamra related to the COVID-19 updates.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. So, I'm going to lead off this evening, as I always do, talking about the Winnebago County Weekly Data Summary. So, if you recall from previous meetings, this is a report put out by the county each and every week that covers the previous two-week period. So, the most recent report that I'm going to cover refers to the period between November 20th, October 27th and November 9th. So, over this two-week period, for our geographical boundary of the district, we had a case rate of 582, which places us in the very high category. So, for the past few weeks now, we have been continuing to increase in terms of the number of cases that are within our geographical boundary. If you recall, we were seeing a downward trend, but that has since reversed. So, hopefully, that doesn't continue, but with the holidays coming up, it's something we're keeping very close on yet. When we look at individuals who are under the age of 18, we've also seen an increase. This most recent two-week period, we had 142 cases for the district geographical boundary, and that's up from 110 the previous week. But when you dig deeper into the numbers, we had, for the under-five-year-old category, we had 14 cases. For the age group between five and nine, we had 59 cases. For the 10- to 14 age group, we had 48 cases. And for the 15- to 17-year-old age group, we had 21 cases. So, as you can see, the cases in, at least in our geographical boundary, are really being driven by the five- to nine-year-old population and the 10- to 14-year-old population. So, it seems as though that vaccine eligibility can come soon enough for us. Speaking of the vaccination clinics that Dr. Davis mentioned, we do have our second dose clinics coming up for both of those, both Oak Lawn and Shapiro. So, the second dose clinic for Oak Lawn is going to be Monday, November 29th, also starting at 3:30, just as it did this most recent clinic. And then at Shapiro, that will be on December 7th. So, those are three weeks from the original vaccination clinic for each. And as a reminder, for those who want to get their child vaccinated, there are many opportunities throughout the district. I know Walk-in Wednesdays for the Health Department, that's only being exposed, continues to have pediatric doses in stock and several of many of the pharmacies. And then finally, our COVID dashboard on our district website, which is updated every Thursday, relays the number of active positive cases that we have in the district and then also tracks the cumulative total. As of Thursday, November 11, we had 81 active cases for students in our district and seven active cases for staff, so 88 total. And those were at 17 different school sites. And then in terms of cumulative totals, we've had 557 total positive cases since the start of the school year, with 39 of those cases that we suspect were transmitted within our schools. Any questions?
Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are on to other reports, board reports, board member reports from committees. I have, I believe that the Policy and Governance Committee, Education Committee and Facilities and Finance Committee may be ready to provide a report. So, we'll start with Policy and Governance.
All right. So, yes, we met on November 10, and as you saw in your board packet, there were 28 policies that were updated. Language basically was updated, so it was either legal references were added or there were slight changes in language. And so, I won't name what all 28 of those are. They, we will vote on them tonight. They were in our packet. Some of the other policies that we talked about was educator licensing, and it was recommended that administrative guideline have some language added that would, that would reflect the need to acquire proper teacher licenses that include clinical experience. We also, Dr. Davis brought forth the committee meetings policy, where we could talk about public forum parameters for committee meetings. So, we will review that policy again in December. He also brought forth the regular meetings to propose that only a total of three board meetings be held in the months of November and December to avoid having back-to-back meetings. And instead of changing the policy, we thought it would be best to just make it so that in May, when we do our board vote on the meetings, that we note it there, that we know what those meetings, those three meetings between November and December instead of four. Sometimes it'll be two meetings in November and one in December. Sometimes, based on Thanksgiving, it'll mean one in November and two in December. But we all agreed with that idea, just with the holidays and instead of avoiding back-to-back meetings. The last policy we talked about was the wellness policy. I was the one that asked that we bring this forward because I know Niola, some of the Niola options are to include reference to recess. So, we are going to look at that one again in December. We're going to compare what we have to what Niola has and see if we want to adopt some changes for that one. So, that was our discussion. Like I said, we're going to meet again in December. What day? December 1st at 8 o'clock. So, that's our report.
Thank you. Next up, representative for the Education Committee.
Yes. So, we met on Thursday, November 4th, the day after our last board meeting, which was perfect timing because at the last board meeting, we had gone over the forward exam results. And then at our Education Committee meeting, we talked a lot about literary resources, especially for the education, or for the elementary level. And currently, we're using Lucy Culkin's system. We're trying to supplement that as one of the plans in place to bring in Fanta San Penel to try to supplement where some of the gaps are in the literary, literacy program. So, we've talked a lot about that. Still conversations to be had about that process and making sure that we are on the right path, but we do have a lot of options to help our teachers do the best that they, that we can. One thing of note is every classroom had received $500 worth of books to expand their libraries and offer a variety of choices to capture students' interest in reading, which for my own kids, it's big to be able to find something that connects with them so they can enjoy reading. So, next meeting, Thursday, December 2nd.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Facilities and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Feshal. Facilities and Finance met on November 2nd. Our main piece of work that day was to take a look at the survey results that asked members of the community, including students and parents and citizens at large, what they wanted for a new middle school name for the new Northside Middle School in their rationale. There were over 700 responses received. The committee reviewed the options and feedback from parents, students, and the community, and it was determined that the top suggestions were for a person with historical ties to the area. The committee discussed the top votes, excuse me, and decided to go back to the community with a second survey to choose from the following people. Jessie Jack Hooper, an American activist and suffragist. She, she worked very hard to make sure that women got the right to vote and was the first president of the Wisconsin League of Women Voters. Paul Poberesny was an American aviator, military veteran, aircraft designer, and entrepreneur, dedicated his life to aviation, founded the EAA and EAA Air Venture Fly-In in Oshkosh. Belle Phillips was a civil rights leader, legal pioneer philanthropist, one of the first African-American women to attend and earn a degree from the University of Wisconsin Law School. She was also the first woman and first African-American to be elected to the Milwaukee Common Council. So, those are the three names that are out there right now in the survey. You can go to our district webpage to vote. I did test that out myself, and I know you can only vote once, so just, just so you know, it's not like some of the other surveys conducted by other institutions in the community where you're encouraged about multiple times you can vote once. The topic of school mascot also came up. The theme gained from this portion of the survey was for an animal to be named as the school mascot, but the committee felt this was an administrative student decision to choose rather than a board decision. Our board policy doesn't speak to choosing mascots, but it does speak to naming of facilities. So, the survey is out there, and I believe that is through November 19th. Then very architects will compile the results, present them to the Facilities and Finance Committee at a special meeting at 11:30 on November 30th. The target for presenting the school name to the full board for approval is December 15th. So, that's Facilities and Finance. And then I just have a brief update on CSO. I attended the Board of Control meeting on November 9th. We heard from the Instructional Services Team Leader, very impressive array of options for districts to become involved, including a literacy center, which is based on research and cutting-edge strategies for the teaching of reading. It also includes the Rite Program, a residency and teacher education to take individuals with bachelor's degrees and help them to become teachers to address the teacher shortage. And then finally, with CSO 6, and this was sent out in a memo from Sherry, there's a workshop on December 2nd governing in uncertain times, it's in the evening, from 5:30 to 7:00. So, you need to sign up if you're interested in that. And then just finally, a reminder on the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or WASB convention, to be held in January, there is an early bird registration so that we can reduce rate. And so, if you have an interest in that, you could check with me, or better yet, just sign up with Sherry so that we get you on the list.
When is that deadline for the early bird registration?
If you don't know, I didn't bring that with me tonight.
All right.
It's coming up. It could be December 1st, but it might be earlier. I can get something out to you tomorrow and then have Sherry send something out.
I'm sure I can find you an email, too.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other board member, committee-type reports? All right. Seeing none. We are going to move on to the public forum portion of the meeting. Let me get my bearings here. Like to note that a total of 45 minutes during tonight's meeting will be allotted for non-agenda and agenda-related public forum. Each speaker will be allotted up to two minutes to speak. When addressing the board, please clarify, sorry, please clearly state your name and full address and topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for the particular, for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Two, please clearly state and concisely state the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel, titles, or identifiable descriptions may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to be directed to the appropriate administrator. All right. First, before we proceed with anyone that may be waiting in the virtual room, I want to take a moment to acknowledge two written comments that we, that we received for the non-agenda-related public forum. I'm not going to read the comments that they prepared for us, but their comments will be put into the written record for the meeting with the meeting minute notes as well, and will be available to the public. So, but I'm going to acknowledge the names and the addresses of the people that provided us those comments and a very brief, very brief acknowledgement of what the topic of their letter is about. Okay? So, first up, we have Kristi Took. She resides at 1679 Thornton Drive in Oshkosh, Wisconsin. Her basic comments relate to the, hold on, the side effects of, that would come to the use of face masks being continued to be used in our school district. The next item, that is a non-agenda-related item, comes from Krista Brynwood. She lives at 1821 Iowa Street in Oshkosh, and she provided some comments related to, basically related to mandatory requirements of the Pfizer vaccine being administered under emergency use. So, and she goes through some lengthy points in regards to the vaccine and its, its effects. So, that is all I have for non-agenda-related written comments. Next, we move on to the non-agenda-related public forum in, in our Zoom waiting room. And do we have someone?
Yep.
And is that, can you acknowledge who that person is?
According to their screen name, it's Matthew Took.
Okay. You can go ahead and let Mr. Took in.
He should be in, but just waiting for him to turn on his microphone.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Took? Mr. Took, we are here. We can see that you're in the virtual waiting room.
Hello.
Hello. How are you this evening?
I'm beautiful. How are you guys?
I think we're all doing well. Thank you for asking.
All right.
Mr. Took, can you please provide us your, your name and address, please?
I'm Matthew Took. I'm at 1679 Thornton Drive here in Oshkosh.
All right. Thank you for providing that information. You have two minutes.
Yeah. Highly disappointed here that you wouldn't read the comments of the people that took the time to write those, especially considering that they've been read in the past. But today, I just wanted to address vaccine clinics, and I wanted to provide parents a perspective that's not being provided by the school. I have emailed the entire school board, the activities directors at North and West, and also the superintendent and director of pupils, Matthew Bunnin. And I provided the numbers that are provided by the CDC in their own vaccine adverse reaction system. And since I had not gotten any confirm or denial that the numbers are accurate, I wanted to speak now publicly and ask this board to confirm or provide the correct numbers. But as of November 5th of 2021, the CDC's VAERS system reports that 18,461 deaths have been reported as a result of the vaccine, 91,982 hospitalizations, and 875,651 adverse events have been recorded. Now that this is something that we put out in the public record, and my emails are a matter of open record for anyone that's interested, I'm asking you all to respond, to please either confirm that what I've provided is indeed what is cited by the CDC in a VAERS adverse events system, or provide what you feel are the correct numbers, because we don't want to obviously mislead people. My goal here is simply to provide parents with the information, all of the information that they need in order to make a very conformed decision on what they should do and what's best for the child. We often say that we're following the CDC guidelines, but it's sad that we seem to be ignoring the CDC's own safety database on these vaccines. And since this hasn't been brought into the public, I felt an obligation to do so. And this is also the database that's cited by Winnebago County to parents. When you go into the school vaccine clinic, you read the risks written in a reference if you have an adverse reaction reported to the VAERS system. if you have an adverse reaction, you report it to the VAERS system. So again, this is the official CDC way to report adverse events. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity this evening.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Took. Do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and who is this person?
It just says OW Girls Swim. That was the next person in line.
Oh, sure. Okay.
That'll be cut off shortly.
Thank you.
They should be able to hear you now.
Okay. Hello. Please introduce yourself. Hello?
Doesn't look like they have a microphone on their system.
Okay, well, there we go. Looks like, are those, do we have students?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Can you hear us? All right. It looks like your mic is still muted on our end. All right. Good afternoon. Do you, so it looks like there's a group of students who are representing the Oshkosh West Swimming Team, correct?
Yes.
Do you all want to introduce yourselves or not? Or do you just want to represent yourselves as the swim team?
Um, just a little.
Okay, that's fine. So you have two minutes. I did give the previous speaker a little bit more than two minutes. I was more between two minutes and 30 seconds and around three, so I'm happy to provide you that as well. And typically, in the history of this being a student-driven district, we tend to give students a little bit more time to talk about items that are important to them when they're here with us. So if you're comfortable, move right ahead.
All right, thank you. So the Ashkosh girls swim team and the Ashkosh women's tennis team feel that the administration was excluded with their state regulation protocol. In return, the Ashkosh girls swim team and that team felt disregarded and disrespected. Both teams had multiple state qualifiers, yet they did not receive a state send-off. The administration's excuse was that we did not qualify as a team, yet Marion Webster's definition of a team is a group of people who compete in a sport, game, etc., against another group. Multiple athletes were participating as they battled other schools, meeting Marion Webster's definition of a team. The administration, however, refused to recognize either sport as a team because multiple individual athletes qualified. The girls swim and tennis team are an excellent example of what an accomplished team looks like. The tennis team had a group of girls qualify for doubles, which takes exceptional communication skills and collaboration, which are necessary for a successful team. The girls swim team managed to break all three really rehearsed by their thriving team atmosphere. It takes all four swimmers' hard work and dedication to accomplish this incredible task. While both sports didn't meet the administrative policy of a state team, they showed all the characteristics of what it takes to establish a successful team. While that should be acknowledged to inspire other teams, the administration disregarded both teams' success and missed the opportunity to inspire other athletes. In that process, they made both teams feel as if their accomplishments were not as valuable as other sports. Both teams experienced feelings of neglect as they didn't receive a state send-off. The tennis team was confused over the administrative policy, as it was never clarified, and they were unaware of what it takes to receive a state send-off. The swim team experienced feelings of inattention as the administration's policy excluded them. To explain that more, in swimming, you cannot qualify as a team, so the swim team can never receive a state send-off with the current policy. When this was part of the administration's intention, they included a new policy that the swim team could receive a state send-off if they weren't sectional. However, that policy doesn't go hand in hand, as winning sectional has no impact on state qualification. This secured the swim team's feelings of neglect, as there was no legitimate policy for them to receive a state send-off. Both teams felt their hard work was not equivalent to other sports that received a state send-off. Administration's narrow definition of a team excluded hard-working, deserving athletes from a state send-off. To build a community environment within the school, a new policy should be implicated that all state-qualifying athletes should receive a state send-off to enhance a supportive environment with less extracurricular activities.
Thank you for your comments collectively as a team. We appreciate that you were comfortable enough to bring this to us tonight, and I think we, what we hear from you is that you'd like us, as a board, to look at potential policies that relate to the topic that I think that you are bringing to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I will give you my feeling that the board, the board chair, that's the chairperson that's in charge of that committee, is here tonight, and she has heard your request, and so it'll be brought to her to bring that into the works of the Policy and Governance Committee that creates and directs and updates policies for the Oshkosh area school district. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We thank you for your efforts, as well as the Oshkosh West Tennis Team, and we hope that it doesn't take you away from giving it your all on behalf of the Oshkosh area school district. So thank you for your efforts. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Typically, I don't engage in those situations, but this was a group of students, and not to say that the public is not as important, but students are what we are here for. So I felt that it was appropriate to acknowledge what they were asking us to look into. So, all right, thank you for that. Is there any other?
There's one more person.
All right. Wonderful.
It just says Kristy on there right there.
All right. All right. Please let Kristy into the room.
She is in the room, and she should be able to hear you.
All right. Kristy, can you hear me? Hello, Kristy. You're at the, in the boardroom, virtual boardroom for the Oshkosh area school district public forum. Are you able to hear us? All right, one more, one more opportunity. Kristy, we're here. If you can hear us, please unmute your microphone. We are going to move forward. We made three attempts to engage Kristy in regards to the public forum. All right. Is there anyone here for the non-agenda-related public forum? Mr. Gunlock?
No. Nobody else is in.
All right, thank you. We are going to consider the public forum portion of the meeting to be closed, and we will be moving on to the consent agenda portion of the agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished the background materials on each item or has discussed it in a previous meeting. They'll be acted upon with one vote without discussion. I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Moved by Carlin, seconded by Solaji. Please call the roll.
Kurzon?
Aye.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Kurzon?
Aye.
Do you have a move?
We have passed, yep.
Passed.
Right. Thank you. All right, so, moving on to individually considered resolutions, we have number 11.
Ten.
That we will take up first. Let me, forgot, all right. Resolution number 11 reads, "Be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approved the retirements as filed with the secretary of board, secretary to the board of education." Looking for a motion. Moved by Herzog?
Second.
Seconded by Carnes. We are open for discussion. Go ahead, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel. Once again, we have an individual who has devoted more than two decades to serving the students of our school district. Mike Morell has served as a social studies teacher at Oshkosh West High School since 1993, and I think it's appropriate to wish Mike the very best for a long, healthy, and happy retirement, and to thank him for the contributions to student learning and growth over these last 28 years.
Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Carnes?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin?
Aye.
Kurzon?
Aye.
Do you have a stand at resolution carries?
Thank you. All right, next up, we have what was originally Resolution Number 10. It reads, "Be it resolved that the board of education of the Oshkosh area school district approve Musco lighting, Bodart electrical, Soper, JWI, and Spring Turf Field Turf as the vendor contracts for the Oshkosh North High School turf field project as filed with the secretary to the board of education." Looking for a motion.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Carnes, seconded by Solaji. All right, we are open for discussion. I, since, I guess I'll lead with the discussion since I asked it to be pulled here. I don't necessarily have any concerns with the resolution, but I do know that this item was covered in one of the news sources this last week in regards to that it was going to be approved. And then, you know, reading the supporting documents of it recently made me think that there might be questions about that project that need to be answered. Mainly is that we're approving contracts tonight for this, but the project has really been going on for about a month and a half, maybe even a little bit longer than that at this point. And so I wanted to give Mr. Nihans the opportunity to talk about the steps that we've already taken as a board, and that the district administration has done, and to just kind of give some more insight as to why we're approving these tonight, even though the work has already started.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, everybody. So this project started and really kind of took off a little bit more than a year ago, and we got permission from the Facility and Finance Committee to start looking at potentially an alternative to Titan Stadium, which we're getting less and less free access to as far as being able to play our games there. In April, the, our April Facility and Finance Committee meeting, we approached the committee at that time with the project. We had a, we were running a budget surplus to a amount that could cover the field without any other funding. The committee agreed and said, "Go ahead and start working with the city to get the permits and the engineering to move ahead with the project." So we did that. We did not realize at the time that the process with the city to get all the permitting done and all of the engineering work done was going to take four or five months. We thought it would be a much quicker process. So that process got done in October. So work on the, at that point, time was of the essence to get the groundwork done, to lay the base of the turf, to make sure that the field would be playable before summer. And also with the supply chain really being hampered at that point, it was also important to start getting materials ordered as quickly as we could. So we had taken it to the October, yes, the October Facility and Finance Committee to, for the bids at that, at that time, for permission, and they had agreed and asked it come for the board for the resolution. Again, one other thing, so we were trying to get the base done, which that work started after October 11th, so it's been a little under a month since we've been actually constructing, doing any contracting work at North. We have to get that whole base done by the end of November so we can at least get some of the base in for the lighting and the electrical work, and that has to get done prior to freeze. So then that allows us to come back in April and finish the stonework that has to get done of the base, and then lay the turf itself. And the overall completion date is, we're looking at May 18th as a completion date for the entire project. So then we would be able to have programming and in practice in the summer on that field.
And my only comment is, thanks for going through all those layers of what it takes to make a project that we had a rare opportunity to kind of make, you know, in a short amount of time and to make those decisions on it. I think this is just an example of the levels and layers that it takes sometimes, not only in school districts, but in communities and municipalities, of what it takes to get these projects moving forward. So, again.
I would like to add, just, I forgot if I could, just for a minute. The funding source for this has changed from what we originally presented to the Facility and Finance, and we did discuss this at the last committee meeting for them. Originally, when we came out in April, we were looking at using, because we had the money and the budget. Well, that fiscal year is already gone. So rather, and we put that money in the fund balance for, to help us with our debt and our rating for the bond market. So we are taking the funding for this from Fund 80, our recreation department, as well as Fund 46. This is not coming from our general budget, and it's not coming from the ESER funds that we've received. It's completely from pre-planned money for capital improvement and for the recreation department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Based on past practice in the school district and policy, I think it's 6230 on purchasing. When something comes to facilities and finance and those three board members, whether they're unified or it's a majority, two, two to one, past practice has been that it comes to the full board before the first shovel goes into the dirt. So moving forward, in order to be open and transparent and to give fidelity to the process, if there's a timeline, like you've suggested, I would recommend then that we hold a special board meeting to do that. I would have to admit, I was surprised, too. I drove past that field a day or two after the Facilities and Finance Committee met, and they were moving a lot of dirt. So I just think that we need to be true to our policies and to be open and transparent. It should come before the full board, before that first shovel goes into the dirt.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or anything?
I guess, I guess I have a story to share that you could elaborate on. As part of upgrading our facilities so that we're competitive with neighboring school districts, if I'm recalling this right, we had a soccer game that was supposed to be scheduled at Titan Stadium, and when Titan Stadium became unavailable, we had to move the soccer game we were going to host to Appleton, right? Because we didn't have any facilities available to host that soccer game within Oshkosh. So, just so the public can understand, we're upgrading facilities so that they're adequate to meet the needs of our athletes in this area, and so that we're competitive with other neighboring school districts, so that we don't have to move events all the way up to Appleton, because we're not able to host an event here due to the, due to where our facilities are at. So I thought I'd share that.
Ms. Carlin?
I just have a quick question. A lot of people are, think that we get to use J.J. Keller Field for free, and that certainly is not the case. We all know that. Do you happen to know, like ballpark price tag for what we pay annually to use the field for our football games?
Yeah, in a typical year, it would be about $90,000.
And that's just for both sports? And if that's just for football, or does that include soccer?
That would, that would be all-inclusive.
Okay.
The situation we're running into the last several years is, as UW Oshkosh's athletic department has become more nationally competitive, we have less access to that diamond, like board member Wright was just stating, we, it's not uncommon for us to have, especially soccer or football, where they've earned the right to play, to host regional or sectional games, and we don't get access to that field. And in the specific incident that was just referenced, we did have to go rent Appleton West to play a home regional game that our kids had earned.
Yep. And I, we also can't host things like basketball tournaments on a large scale. We don't have the facilities for that. We don't have an indoor track like a lot of other schools have and everything. So I asked you this question so that the community could hear that spending $100,000 to rent a facility every year... We don't have indoor track like a lot of other schools have and everything. So I asked you this question so that the community could hear that spending $100,000 to rent a facility every year is money that we could be investing in our own facilities and then be, and it would be available to us when we needed it. So thank you for answering that.
You're welcome. Seeing no other comments? Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Drew.
Thanks, Drew.
And please call the roll.
Kurzon?
Here.
Aye.
Aye.
Karnz?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Solaji?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Wyman?
Aye.
Carlin? Aye.
Kurzon?
Aye.
Karnz?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Arlene.